Good evening. Welcome to this forum for the Lathrop Village City Council election. Today is October 25, 2017. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the president of the League of Women Voters for the Oakland area, Jerry Rinchler, who has a few comments to make.
Thank you, Neil, and welcome, candidates. Thank you for filing to run and to help your community, and thank you all for being here. I won't spend much time, but I'd like to share with you a project which the Leagues of Women Voters in Michigan have taken on this year. So you know, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens in government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy. So one of the things that our state league has endorsed and supported and encouraging all the leagues in the state is to ask you, those of you who are active participants, who are voters in our community, who care about expanding voters' rights, help us by, if you're willing to do this, signing this postcard and sending it either to your senator or your state representative here in southeast Michigan. And I'm going to tell you what it says, and then you'll understand. Dear Representative, please pass legislation so that your constituents can participate more fully in the democratic process. Introduce and support new laws to allow early voting, same-day registration, and online voter registration. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that voting preserves all other rights. Without convenient access to the ballot box, citizens are not able to protect any other rights. Please stand up to protect the vote of Michigan citizens. So I'm going to pass these out, if you'd like so, at your leisure. I'm sorry they're not printed with your legislator's name. We've been using them statewide. And also, if you know anyone who needs some advice on how to register, how to vote, and more information about elections, I've got those sheets with me as well. So let me turn this over to Neil. Thank you.
Thank you. This forum will be featuring the candidates who have filed for the Lathrop Village City Council. There are five candidates for three seats. You may vote for up to three candidates. The two candidates finishing first and second will serve four-year terms. The candidate finishing third will serve a two-year term. The sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Neil Zekman, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of the city of Lathrop Village. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our communities strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the league's information available here tonight, or visit our website at LWVOA.org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum. Please turn off all cell phones. We ask that candidates answer the question with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened for duplication and appropriateness by Susan Liebetrue and Maria Wallison. Over there. Paige Jerry Rinchler, whom you've already met and is circulating in the back, will be circulating with paper and pencils for your questions. Please turn your questions in to her. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given one minute for opening statements in alphabetical order. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless extended by me. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer is Judy Bateman. The candidates are Frank M. Brock, Ian A. Ferguson, Bruce Kanter, Saleem Siddiqui, and also on the ballot is Marcus Rautzes. We will begin the one-minute opening statements in alphabetical order with Mr. Brock.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum this evening. The election of your city council members is important to all of you, I'm sure, and this provides you an opportunity to get to know each of us better. I have been a Lathrop Village resident for 40 years and have had the honor of serving our city as a member of the city council for over 25 of those years, and have been privileged to be chosen by my council colleagues to serve as your mayor for the past 22 years. During that time, we have compiled an excellent record of recording quality city services, maintaining fiscal integrity at the highest levels. We revised our city master plan to meet the future needs for redevelopment of our business district of our city and the preservations of our high-quality residential areas. I hope that you will continue to support me in giving the opportunity to continue to serve the city that I have grown to love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. And now, Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to have this forum. I'm Ian Ferguson. I'm a 22-year resident in Lathrop Village, six-year veteran of the U.S. Navy. My educational background consists of the following: a bachelor's of science in engineering with a minor in mathematics, associate in science, also a master's of science in management from Walsh College in accountancy. My main reason for re-running for this position is the following: although we have bells and whistles that we would love to have in Lathrop Village, such as having a more cohesive and inviting environment, we also need to staff up fully. Our staff is heavily under-managed and understaffed, and we need to staff them up immediately and as well as continue our growth within Lathrop Village as well as revitalizing the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Kanter.
Good evening. Again, I'm Bruce Kanter and obviously running for city council. For those that don't know me, I've lived in the community for over 50 years now, the last 28 of which have been in my house over on Sunny Brook. I grew up here. I graduated from Southfield Lathrop High School in 1982. And subsequent to that, went to Kalamazoo College, earned a degree in mathematics, and went on to a successful 30-year career in healthcare consulting. Anyone who does know me knows that I'm extremely passionate about Lathrop Village, and I've undertaken a variety of self-initiated efforts to improve Lathrop Village, and hopefully I'll have a chance to talk about some of those a little bit later. I've wanted to run for 20 years, but professional obligations got in the way. But now I'm retired, and I have the time, I have the energy, and I want to bring a fresh perspective and new ideas to the city council so that we can tackle the issues that we face in the coming years. And so that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Mr. Kanter. Mr. Siddiqui.
Hello, everybody. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having me here today and having us all here today. Appreciate the opportunity, and I'm honored to be on the stage with these three other great gentlemen. I want to run for city council because, you know, I want to help the city. And I've been a resident for 21 years now. My family is here. You know, we've been residents. We have five kids. We love the city. We've done a lot of activities in the city. You know, I haven't been involved in the city government before, but I, you know, I get the feeling that people want maybe a new idea, new perspective, fresh eyes on things, and just new ideas, and I want to try to bring that to the city. So that's why I'm running. I'm a CPA by background, so I'm good with numbers. I want to make sure things are, you know, being run fiscally responsibly, and also look for new ideas and new ways to improve and keep our city beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. We'll now have our first question, and for that question, we'll begin with Mr. Brock. The question to all candidates, though, is: "Council has said they paid a lot of money to a consultant for a new website, yet it's barely functional. What processes should be in place to ensure qualified consultants are hired and that the work is delivered as promised? What can be done when it is not?" Mr. Brock.
Okay. The website is true, that we've -- the product we have received is not up to the par, up to the specifications that we had agreed to. And council has been asking staff and has had asked staff, excuse me, asked them to intercede and get the system, get up the way we had been told that it would be. We have seen already they have done a number of improvements to the thing, but we are prompt, we may have to look at a different vendor eventually to get the system up the way we want it to run. So we have always had a system whereby we invite proposals, competing proposals. We usually, you know, work with people who can give us the background information we need to have to draw up specifications. This particular vendor met those, and so...
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Initially, when we went out for bids, we had some bids, but I believe that in any municipality and in any corporation, you should at least have three qualified bids. And from that, you have to discern whether or not the qualifications are actually exact. In this case, we basically had a bid that seemed inviting, but in reality, it really wasn't, because we didn't have any stopgaps in the middle. So in order to correct going forward, we should have had qualified bids to make sure that this company could have delivered with this website. The second part of this question is that you should have stopgaps as you go along. So for example, if you have three or four months, and it's moving along in maybe a slower fashion, then you need to reconfirm or re-verify that all of the bells and whistles, quote-unquote, that we've requested have been delivered. If they were not, then you have to reorganize and hold that company accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Kanter.
Yeah. Having not been on council at the time, I don't know the specifics in terms of what went on, in terms of hiring the vendor that was hired, but I do know as a resident, I'm frustrated with the website as well. And my frustration isn't from the look and the organization perspective, but it's a frustration from the fact that it never seems to be updated in time. And one of the things that I suggested a few weeks ago at one of the city council planning sessions and then at the city council meeting was that we're in the process of hiring a receptionist for the front office, and my suggestion is, we're probably going to hire a college student for that position, and most college students or a lot of college students are required to take web authoring classes. And so why don't we hire somebody who has that skill so not only can they be, you know, the administrator for the office, but also be able to update our web?
Thank you, Mr. Kanter, and Mr. Siddiqui.
Sure. I think, you know, for any type of consulting agreement, if the city goes out and hires somebody, whether it's for the website or for anything else, you have to have the process in place to find the right candidates, right? So we should have some kind of proposal process, have multiple proposals come in, evaluate them, meet with them, check their references. I think that's very important. And then you select the best vendor. And once you do that, there has to be follow-up. There has to be somebody from the city that's assigned to that project, or that, you know, committee, or somebody that's assigned to that endeavor, and, you know, who has meetings, regular meetings with the vendor, making sure things are coming along as they should. And then once the project is, you know, in certain stages, if the project is almost completed, or when it's completed, there has to be somebody from the city who's in charge of it. So I don't know if we have someone from the city in charge of the website, but there should have been somebody kind of overseeing the project, and now when it's done or close to done, to make sure everything's working properly.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Ferguson. The question to all candidates is: "What is your vision for the future of Annie Lathrop School?" Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you for the question. Actually, that's one of my running features. We want to redevelop Annie Lathrop School into a mixed-use facility. Right now, it's indicative of a decaying school, and it's reflecting badly on Lathrop Village. We treasure where we live, and for anyone to drive by Southfield Road and see that school, it reflects badly on us. So we've been working with the Sornow family to come up with a plan to redevelop it as a mixed-use facility. And we also have tossed around, and hopefully we can finalize this in the coming years, maybe we can have some senior housing that could be compartmentalized in this building. Because when our seniors decide to sell their house in Lathrop, they leave Lathrop, and we cannot afford to have them leave, because they've made Lathrop what it is today. And so mixed use is my focus if I'm re-elected.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Kanter.
I also agree with Ian in terms of using it for mixed use. I think there's a lot of things that we can do with it. In canvassing recently, I had one neighbor throw out a great idea for turning it into an artist's community, similar to something like Crooked Tree, if anybody's familiar with that, up in Petoskey, where we could have classes, you could have a stage for theaters, you could have artists who reside there in a shared space. So that was one idea. I've heard ideas to turn it into, as Ian said, some senior housing, as well as coffee shops, restaurants, I've heard breweries. I just want something in there. Want this, want it to be repurposed. And, you know, the issue, obviously, with that building is the asbestos, and if we can't repurpose it, you know, I certainly don't want to get rid of that building, but we have to do something, and that could always be a possibility as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kanter. Mr. Siddiqui.
Yes, the school is, I think, something that everybody's interested in, and what are we going to do with it? So I'm not, you know, I don't have all the answers for what's going to happen there, but what I do know is we should get people's feedback on it, their opinions. We should solicit the residents, we should talk with the business owner, we should talk with other business owners and figure out, okay, what can we do there? What are good ideas? And the guys have mentioned some great ideas, and I agree with all that. So I'm, you know, I'm not going to say I want this or that, but there's a lot of things you can do with that building. And so let's listen to our residents, let's get their ideas for it, and let's figure out what's the best thing to put there. I mean, I would love to see coffee shops, some office space, some, you know, artists, that's a great idea. And there could be all kinds of things, but I want to be collaborative and get, you know, people's ideas on it, and then move forward once we have, you know, some good plans in place.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui, and Mr. Brock.
The school has been a priority of our planning efforts for quite some time. We are fortunate that we have the owner of the property that is willing to work with us and to try and help find a solution that will be a benefit to the community. I also, we've, I've always, a couple things have advocated, is we've looked at it for mixed use, as Dennis mentioned. Senior housing was one of my favorite topics. Seeing how the magic age I've reached, I could maybe move right in. But at any rate, the problem you have with a building like that is the huge amount of money it's going to take to turn it into a venture that then has to, if you've got a private owner, he's got to make money. And so far, none of those proposals that have been floated seem to make financial sense. So we're working hard to make that happen, but it's going to take a lot more work.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Next question, we'll begin with Mr. Kanter. "What do you personally think should be done with the House in the Woods property?"
Well, I know there's a strong push for the Lathrop Preserve. I would love to see it maintained as a preserve. I think we need more green space in Lathrop. I know that the opposite argument is, you know, wanting to use that for residential space to generate more taxes, but, you know, I think green space is important, and, you know, maybe we could offset that with some of the tax revenue that we've gained from Michigan First, which is a, you know, from what I understand, about a quarter million dollars a year. So I'd like to see it maintained as green space, a park. Yeah, that's what I think.
Thank you, Mr. Kanter. Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I agree. I like that, the idea of having more green space in the city overall. I think that's very important for our city. We have a lot of people that walk, you know, with their kids and their pets, and I think it's great to have additional green space and park space. I'm in favor of doing that rather than dividing it up into more residential lots. You know, but again, I mean, so that's my opinion right now, but again, like, for everything else, I want to be someone that's going to listen to other people's opinions, and let's get together and talk about it, and if people have great ideas, we can listen to those ideas and see what the best one is. But my initial thought on that is, you know, I like the idea of having additional green space, and I think that's how we should, what we should do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
The House in the Woods property is very important, has a very important heritage for our city. However, the need for open space or additional park property or whatever, we have sections of the town that have no park facilities at the present time. That section has adequate resources, in my opinion. The other issue with the House in the Woods property is if you're going to turn it into a park, even a passive park, is we don't have the staff in our DPS department to do the kind of upkeep that's really going to be required for that not to become an overgrown ISOR in the middle of that neighborhood. We did a study, we talked with all the property owners on that area, and they universally think it ought to be developed. So we need to sound it out with the community and then develop a plan and take action.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, I've been an advocate of green space since I started running even before. And what I've noticed on that side of Lathrop is that there are no sidewalks. There's one park over there, and the Louise Lathrop property is actually pretty large to be a park. So I wanted to propose making it a smaller space, maybe dividing up some of the property and then still have a pocket park, and then in collaboration with Parks and Recreation, combine making it some sort of calisthetic walking park, and then you tie that into the other parks. So if you're a millennial, which we aren't really advertising to come to move here, which is the next generation, we need to actually have them be excited about Lathrop. And part of that is having parks, walking to parks, and combining those parks, having them fit together. So you do one thing here, and you go over to the next park and do the next thing as far as working out. So I'm an advocate of the green space, but in a smaller pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Siddiqui, and I believe it sounds like it may be a related question. "What would you like to see done with the Village Preserve?"
Yeah, it's related. I mean, I think with all the, with this question and the previous one, again, I want to obtain feedback from what the community wants to have happen, but I think initially, you know, I'd like to see green space, I'd like to see more parks in the city. I think we should redevelop the ones that we have and make them really nice. For this property as well, I think we should kind of think along those lines. You know, I'm not, I want to bring the right type of development to the city, but I don't want to have overdevelopment in the city. I want the city to keep its charm and its beauty, and, you know, that's what's going to, I think, help our property values and help, you know, keep our city great. So I'm thinking more along the lines of green space and parks even for that property.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
Village Preserve, it indeed was related to the last question. The, again, I would repeat that I, my personal view is that that property should be redeveloped as homes and that the, we take on our, the parks we have and do them properly. Make sure that they're adequate for the needs of our community and that we, and that they're attractive and people want to use them. So I'm not sure that adding one more in that space will help us in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, the city, to clear that space, we actually spent about $90,000 to do that, and we also worked in conjunction with the reserve, with the reserve volunteers. That kind of have disbanded at this point. So again, to reiterate, I think it should be a smaller park, and I think the extra space should be divided around the circle of the houses that are there, just so we can actually combine that revenue, because we're actually dividing it up. We're making it a smaller park, and at the same time, we are making space for future residents, which are millennials. I mean, I'm an old guy, we're all old guys here. The millennials are the wave of the future. We have not even considered them yet. So to have a park in that area is a huge potential for them to say, you know, Lathrop Village is a place I want to live, because it's a walkable community.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, and Mr. Kanter.
Well, I think the group that has been working on the Village Preserve, or was up until about a year ago, I think they still want to be an active group. So to Frank's point, I think we do have a group of people who would be willing to help monitor, or not monitor, maintain the facilities at that park. In fact, I actually talked with seven of them over the last week, and they've expressed a lot of frustration in terms of having the manpower and the will to actually maintain that park, but from their perspective, they turned over their proposal to council, I believe it was in March, but, and nothing's happened with it. So they've kind of reached the point of frustration, and I know they would like to, but they're waiting for the city. So I hope we can use them to maintain that park and develop it.
Mr. Kanter, we'll begin the next question with Mr. Brock. And actually, there are two questions that are nearly identical, so I'll read them both. First question, "What do you propose to improve communication to residents?" And the second question, "The communication to residents seems to really be lacking. How do you plan to improve it?"
Providing adequate communications to our residents has always been an issue that we've worked on and tried to improve. We recently, in the last year, we've revamped our community newsletter that we send out to each of you. We have, I think we need to do more with our website in order to get the, make it easier for us to communicate with residents. We have one of our staff members whose job it is is to do the newsletter and get those things going, and he's doing a great job of that, I think. The tremendous improvements in that. So we just, I think we, those are the areas we need to work on, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, this is another point that I'm running on. We are grossly understaffed in Lathrop Village. We have three or four people doing five or six jobs. The overlap is horrendous. The morale is low. Immediately, hopefully I get re-elected, I will work hard to try to get that staff manned up ASAP. We cannot afford to have people doing six and seven jobs when you only have three or four people in the position. That's why communication is poor. No one wants to take the initiative of communicating with residents, because they're over, you know, they're overcapacity. And it's absolutely ridiculous for us to continue to have this staff when they're, when we have people that are qualified to get hired. We absolutely have to staff up. That is my priority. We have to do that, and I've said that since day one, even last year and the year before that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, and Mr. Kanter.
Yeah, no, I agree with Ian as well in terms of getting our front office up to staff so that we can spend more time communicating. As Frank said, the community, our town is great, but that's, you know, I believe, a quarterly magazine, but the website could fill in the gaps if we could get that up and running and get it updated on a regular basis. And I think we haven't fully taken advantage of social media. In my canvassing that I've been doing over the last couple of weeks, I've had several, actually not several, a lot of people tell me that they love villagers, but they want something more official from the city, you know, an official website similar to villagers where they can get information about events, about what's going on in the city, and so forth, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kanter. Mr. Siddiqui.
Yes, I think we need to put somebody in charge of communicating with the residents of the city. So, you know, I don't think we have, you know, regular communication. I think the website obviously needs to be updated. You know, emails, I think, should be going out to residents about important... think should be going out to residents about important issues, you know, either, you know, through emails directly to them or through a Facebook kind of page. So somebody needs to kind of own that process, you know, take it over, be responsible for it. The city needs to put somebody in charge of that. And I understand, maybe we don't have the staff or somebody can't do it right now, and I agree with the, with the comments that we need to staff up and make that happen. And I think we can do that by, you know, you know, the issue is cost. How are you going to do that? Well, we got to find revenue, and that's another area that we can get into later. But we got to find revenue so we can do, get the proper staffing, and then put someone in charge of that communication. And, and I think if you have someone that's paying attention to it and in charge of it, it'll go much better.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Ferguson. What changes would you make to the administrator's search process that might prevent unsatisfactory hires in the future?
Well, I, the first change I would make is ensure that the person we're interviewing doesn't have any connections with Lathrop Village, period. That's the first one. The second one, he has to be qualified to be a city manager. And the third, he actually has to know how to do a budget. This, he or she, yes, exactly. He or she, since this is the League of Women Voters, and I'm glad you mentioned that. So I've been advocating for women for years, and I, you know, I was happy that we actually had two women that actually made it to the final five. And, you know, we're going to be looking for a qualified person, he or she. And that person has to be able to do a budget, able to, to understand municipalities, and also, you know, be able to communicate with the residents, not just do the job and be in the office all the time. We just got to have someone that, that is passionate about residents and also want to stay here for over 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor?
Well, the first thing I'd like to see is the interview process changed. Coming from the business, the business world, when we interviewed people, and I'd hi, I'd hi, I've hired dozens of people over my career, we used a very structured interview process where people had to talk about situations, actions, and results. So you could actually see what they've done and how they, you know, how, how they went about doing it, as opposed to having just an hour conversation where, you know, you really, you really can't get into that, into that level of depth in a, in a simple conversation without it's something that's a little bit more structured. I'd like to see more vetting. I'd like to see the person be, as Ian said, be a, a city manager somewhere else with some, some city manager experience. I'd like to see them have more budgeting experience, because that was, that was an issue with, with the last city manager. And I'd also like to see this person have some grant experience, because we need to be able to access grants wherever we can to do things like improving Southfield Road or improving our parks and, and infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Siddiqui?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, I'm not part of the council, so I wasn't involved in this interview process at all or how it, or how it went. But in my job, we hire people all the time, and I hire people, you know, often. And I think, so the first thing we have to do is make sure we have the right HR process in place. You know, how are we finding candidates? You know, do we have the right, are we using recruiters? What sources are we using to find these people that are out there? Are we going on job boards, or are we, you know, using, I think we use the, you know, Michigan Municipal League, so that's good, but make sure we have the correct process in place. Once you have that, you know, obtain those resumes, obtain the qualified candidates, do interviews, you know, get down to the, to the final few candidates as you want, check references. And once you're doing that, you should be able to find the right person. And once you, once you have the right person, you got to look for, you got to make sure that person is experienced and qualified and, and energetic. And I think if you do all that, you're going to find the right candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui, and Mr. Brock?
The search process that we used previously was just as thorough as has been described by, by comrades up here at the table. We utilized outside people to help us conduct the search. We had workshops with the council to determine what are the qualifications we were looking for with the assistance of the, of the search firm. We cast the net pretty wide. We had a significant number of candidates that applied. The field was narrowed and interviews were conducted, and references thoroughly checked, and so on. So it doesn't always work just the way you want, you want it to turn out. Unfortunately, that was the case this last time. It's a, but it's a process and generally has been described by others up here is exactly what we did before and what we, I would think we will do very similarly again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Cantor. Actually, there are two questions here. They're closely related, but since there are two questions, I'm going to ask that the timer give a minute and a half to, for each candidate to answer. So the first of the two related questions is, what is preventing, what is preventing hiring staff for open positions? And the second related question, how can the city retain qualified staff once they've gained experience? There's a little bit of noise coming from the lobby area. I wonder if we could close the doors, please? Did you hear the, both questions?
Yeah.
All right, then we'll begin.
The second part, I'm sorry.
The second part, how can the city retain qualified staff once they've gained experience? We'll begin then with Mr. Cantor.
Well, I, again, not being on council, I can only speak to what I've heard from the, the staff that's exited and the staff that's currently there. The environment under the last city administrator appeared to be pretty toxic, and I think that had a lot to do with, with people going out the door and setting morale, and morale being low. So I, I mean, that's all I know about that. But going forward, I think we need to hire a city manager who sets the tone, somebody who's qualified, who makes it a good place to work so that the, the people who are working under him or her are happy and feel like they, they have opportunities in their job to progress and, and have the responsibility that, that, that they want to make them feel worthwhile in, in their job. And from what I understand, it wasn't like that under the others, the prior city administrator. So I think we just need to fill those positions with good people and, and let things work out. I, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Siddiqui?
Well, so the first part was, what's preventing the hiring of staff right now? You know, again, not being on council, I don't know all the answers to that, but it's probably a combination of, you know, budgetary constraints and are we finding candidates that want to work here? Could be those kind of things. But to that, I'd say, we got to find room in the budget. We have to have room in the budget to hire the amount of people and the right people that we need in the city to make it operate efficiently. So we got to make that happen. And then in terms of keeping them, retaining them once they have experience and are doing a good job, you know, like Bruce said, if you hire the right administrator, that person's got to set the tone, make it a great place to work, you know, and, and even council has a responsibility in that, to be supportive of the administrator and the administration, the rest of the, of our people that are working here, be very supportive, create a great environment, make it an enjoyable place to work and live, and, and then also, you know, with that, make sure people are compensated properly, make sure the benefits are what they need to be. I mean, we should, we should check with what's, what our best practice is, what other cities are doing, and make sure we fall in line. And obviously, our city's going to be unique, but, you know, all those factors are going to make people want to work here and stay here once they are, have been working for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock?
First of all, nothing is preventing the hiring of staff. There is adequate funding for it. These positions are funded. We have adequate money in the budget, so there's nothing there. The city council has authorized our acting city administrator to move to fill the positions that are needed in the city, and she is in the process of doing that. We have advertised those positions. We have received resumes in, in hand, and interviews are about to begin to select and recommend or actually appoint someone to those two positions that are, will bring the central staff pretty much up to strength. In terms of retention, retention is, is always a little tricky. You, all the things that have been said about keeping, you know, the proper type of work environment, paying people in a competitive way, we, we use the wage and salary surveys done by the Michigan Municipal League to make sure what our neighboring cities are doing, what our peer cities are doing, so that we are maintaining a salary range for each of these jobs that is competitive, that allows to fill the jobs, and that's being done. So the other point, though, is we're a small city, and as a consequence, there's only so many steps for people to advance within our city. So we, we have to, I think, be realistic in this process as well, to understand that you get really good people. They may have another opportunity that we won't be able to match in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brock, and Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I think we took all the right steps to try to alleviate the toxic environment. We, we took a cooling off period for council and the staff, and in between that cooling off period, we actually lost another key individual. So we recognized from, from council and staff, we needed to have an interim city manager. We actually went through the interviewing process about two weeks ago, and the, the candidates, although they measured up, we felt that a new council probably would be suited to, to fill that position, to fill the city managers, interim city managers' position. So our, our process is interim city manager in place, changing the toxic work environment, increasing morale with that interim city manager, and then that qualified interim city manager probably has over 30 years that we probably will hire. He will then use his expertise to hire the permanent city manager. That is the way you change a toxic work environment. You also will stop people from leaving because of this city manager. He is now setting tone for the city and the staff, and he's also encouraging, he or she is also encouraging success within the city. We adequately pay our staff. We don't have a problem with that. The benefits are really good, and as Mayor Brock has stated, we're a small city, and we just need people to stay longer than 10 years. We need individuals, male and female, to stay longer than 10 years. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Siddiqui. What will you do to encourage the Downtown Development Authority and others to change for the better the safety and character of Southfield Road Corridor, North and South?
Well, I think that's an important issue. So, you know, I think what I do is, you know, encourage communication with the Downtown Development Authority, communicate with them, sit down with them, figure out what their needs are, what their views are, also get the views of the residents of the city, what they want to have, what they want to see happen with the Southfield Corridor, and kind of get a dialogue going, and let's figure out, okay, what's the best thing we need to do. And then, you know, kind of get across to the, the business owners that, you know, this is good for everybody. Improvement of, of the buildings and of the, of the, of the road is going to be good for the businesses in the city of Lathrop Village, as well as the residents of the city. So, you know, I think it's going to be a collaborative effort to talk with them and, and figure out, okay, what's the best strategies that we're going to undertake to improve the corridor, but we need to do it, because it's a direct reflection on the city as people are, are driving by.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock?
We have a master plan that envisions significant changes along Southfield Road and redevelopment of our business district. We have a number of handicaps to work with. Number one is Southfield Road itself. The road is a county road. It's on the jurisdiction of the Oakland County Road Commission. We have been in a, how do I phrase this nicely? Contest with them for a long, long period of time to get them to worry about more than just moving a massive amount of cars as fast as they can between Eight Mile Road and Birmingham, or vice versa. The, we, there's a lot of improvements. We, we want to make the city much more walker or pedestrian friendly. We want to see redevelopment of all these properties. Our master plan is designed to help encourage that. We have just recently reached agreement with the Road Commission, as a matter of fact, on a new design for the Southfield Road, which I'm not sure I'll ever live to see happen.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, we're, we're really at the mercy of the, the Oakland County Road Commission. We don't have the tax base headcount to influence how they can make a change to that, to Southfield Road. And our best recourse, really, from a DDA perspective, they have to now partner with Southfield and Beverly Hills. So combined, we, we have to influence the Road Commission. That's only, the only way I see us trying to influence the Road Commission. They probably will not slow it down if, if Lathrop Village is at their meetings every month begging and pleading to slow it down. We just don't have that might to do it. So the recourse is to partner with the other two cities, Beverly Hills and Southfield, and cohesively try to slow down those, that road that goes through those two, those three cities.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah, I have a lot of ideas about the Southfield Corridor, and it's one of the main reasons why I'm running. As Frank said, I believe it starts with a, with an update or with a master plan, which I think needs to be sensible. I, I think the master plan could probably be updated a little bit. Like, right now, if I remember correctly, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but I believe it calls for like 8% of the houses to be removed for, for a downtown area, which I don't believe is ever going to happen. So we need a master plan that's sensible, that's supported and embraced by the DDA, and one that the Planning Commission can use to assess any, any new projects. I also think that we need to attract specialty retail, because those are the types of businesses that seem to thrive in Lathrop Village. You look at places like Georgia Soccer Supply that's been here forever, Michael's Lamps. So those are the types of businesses that tend to, tend to survive. And then I also think we, we need to talk to the business owners. We need to get active dialogue going with them on how to improve their properties, see if there are grants available. A lot of times, all it takes is just talking to the business owners. A lot of things, a lot of times, I've just gone in there and been able to affect change just by a simple conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Brock. What is your position on the proposal on civil forfeiture?
The, obviously referring to the ballot proposition that's on our ballot here, that was been placed on the ballot. We don't engage in civil forfeiture. Our police department has never engaged in it. We don't do it. It's a solution that's a, a problem that's, or a solution in search of a problem, maybe. It doesn't exist here in Lathrop Village. The proposal that's on the ballot is taking on an issue that state law is going to determine how civil forfeiture works in this state. And that's if, for those of us who, I think we all want, see people's individual rights protected and so on, but this particular ballot measure will not do anything to assure that in this state. It has to be, a change that has to be made at the state level, because that's where the, you know, the authorities are, that, the courts, et cetera, that, that engage in enforcing civil forfeiture.
Thank you, Mr. Brock, and Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, the, the ballot initiative is, you know, good intentioned. It has all the stopgaps in place, such as you, you have to have a conviction in order to, you know, forfeit. And as Mayor Brock stated, we don't have this issue with the police department. Ultimately, it will be overruled by the state's updated law. So that's, we're kind of in the middle here. I believe in what the, the ballot initiative says, and at the same time, I want to take some of those stopgaps in the ballot initiative and give it to the state, because they can update it according to the ballot initiative. But again, because we're local and they're state, probably won't happen that way. But the person that brought it to ballot had good intentions, and I believe that it, it would help a city. We just don't have that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah, civil forfeiture is something that's been abused across the country. Michigan has made some changes in the law recently, changing from a preponderance of evidence to clear and convincing evidence, which was, which was a big step, but there's much bigger steps that, that need to be taken. From my understanding, Lathrop Village can set more restrictive rules as long as they don't conflict with the federal or state laws. So, for example, requiring that any civil forfeiture funds be used specifically for the roads, I think is a good thing, because, you know, other municipalities across the country have made dramatic abuses, like a margarita slushy machine for a police office, which is true. You know, they could spend the money on anything that they want. And then the conviction piece, I think, is great, because it requires that there's actually a conviction for forfeiture to take place in Lathrop Village. And in my conversations with Scott, with Scott McKee, the chief of police, I was told that we, we did do civil, we did collect between $35,000 and $75,000 two years ago as part of
ago, as part of work with a drug task force.
That was a county effort, and we were, we had contributed an officer.
Your time is up, Mr. Cantor. Thank you. Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I think, since the state law is going to be updated, I don't think, you know, the ballot initiative really was going to, you know, apply to the city. So, you know, I agree that people, you know, we have to make sure people's rights are respected, and then that these laws don't go too far, but I, you know, so as far as the ballot initiative, I don't think, I don't think it's a big deal, you know, with the state law being changed, so, I mean, that's really all I have to say about that.
Okay. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Ferguson. How do you feel about the Michigan First expansion? Is it positive for the city? Mr. Ferguson.
Initially, when the Michigan First came to Lathrop Village with their expansion, I felt it was too large. I felt that if Lathrop Village is synonymous with beautiful houses that are unique in every way, and we decided to tear down three, I didn't think it was satisfactory. So, after council voted to allow Michigan First to continue with their expansion, that night, I reached out to the president of the bank, and I said, hey, can we meet? And we met, and I said, your expansion is too large, can you consider a smaller footprint? He was receptive to that, and I also asked him if he could, if we could bring residents in to kind of do the green space, you know, give recommendations. He was receptive to that. We met with the residents, they gave their input, and they were happy, and I was happy, because ultimately, I worked for the residents. And once they were happy, I was happy. So, going forward with this expansion, it is the right size, and it is great for Lathrop Village at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, I know that was a contentious issue. I wasn't, again, obviously, in city council when that happened. But, I think it was contentious initially, and you hate to lose houses, especially with the unique character that we have in Lathrop Village. But, I applaud Ian for his work in reducing the footprint. In my canvassing yesterday, I actually was in that area and talked to the four houses that were closest to Michigan First, and I was actually pretty surprised that they were all, for the most part, happy with the way that it ended up. So, that was a big surprise to me. I expected to have people talk my ear off when I went to their homes, but they were happy. They're frustrated with the construction going on right now, but the fact that there's going to be green space there, you know, and the footprint is smaller than it was initially proposed, they were satisfied with that. And again, like Ian said, I think it's a good thing for Lathrop, in that it helps us get another quarter million dollars of taxes a year, when our revenues are down forty-five percent from the housing bubble, so, does help.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I think it's been great. I mean, I think it's a good, it's a good property, the building is nice, I mean, they've done a great job there, and, you know, as long as it didn't infringe too much on our city, and, you know, and the houses and things like that. I think with any development that we have in the city, that's what we got to look for, you know, we got to balance it. We want to bring the right type of development in, because it's going to, it's going to help the city, it's going to bring in a lot of tax dollars, it's going to, which is great for the city, we can do a lot more things when we have that kind of revenue coming in. But, we have to balance it and make sure we're not, you know, destroying the uniqueness and the beauty of the city. And I think that was done with this particular development, so I think it's been, it's been a great thing.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
Obviously, I think the Michigan First expansion project is a boon to the city. It has, it's going to, it's, I admit, any construction is always disruptive at first, but the posture of Michigan First from the very beginning was to work with the community and develop a final plan for the property that would accomplish their needs for additional space for the corporate, their corporate needs, but also that would be a good fit with the rest of the community. And I think their final designs and everything have accomplished that. They are the largest taxpayer in our city. It is a boon to have them bringing in this additional expansion. It enables us to do many more things for this, rest of the citizens of our community as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Cantor. What do you think is the solution to the ever-increasing loose dog issue?
As a three lab-owning potential city councilperson, I think it's personal responsibility. We need to, we need to get the message out there and train people that their dogs need to be on leashes, they can't roam free, they're animals. Regardless of how well-trained they are, they are animals, and, you know, I have a dog that's bitten one of my friends, and she, we thought she was the sweetest thing in the world. So, you've got to be ready at all times with dogs, you've got to be proactive. You know, there's, there was talk at the last city council meeting of expanding the role of the committee that they recently legislated, and I think that's a great idea. I think we need to get residents on there, where we can, again, reach out to those people who have dog licenses, so we know who they are, and just educate them on proper responsibility of owning a dog. And the other thing I can say is, from canvassing nine hundred houses so far, I am shocked by how many dogs we have in Lathrop Village. I never knew that, until you knock on the door, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Siddiqui.
Well, I'm not shocked, because we see them all the time. But, we don't have pets, my kids want them, but, you know, it's a problem, you know, loose, I like dogs, I like animals, but you can't have loose dogs running around, because, you know, people are walking, people are going with their kids, people have other dogs that they're walking around with. So, I think the issue, the solution is to educate the owners, you know, on what the rules are, what they should be doing, you know, and maybe if we improve the webpage and the communication system, we can get that communication out there to the various pet owners of what the correct things are that they should be doing, how they should be, you know, the dog should be on a leash, they shouldn't be out by themselves, running around. And then, we got to enforce it. I mean, if they are running around, and, you know, we should have a committee, and I think we do now, but we should have some kind of mechanism to follow up and enforce, and then follow through on that kind of enforcement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
The loose dog problem is one that this council took on by, with the assistance of a citizens committee that helped us by taking input from the community and advising us as to what the revised ordinance should look like. It has beefed up a lot of our enforcement abilities. It includes a additional method for owners of pets, as well as those who are concerned about they have been a victim of perhaps a dog that has caused the problem, to bring more severe enforcement up into the picture. But, I think the, in a perfect world, the personal responsibility thing would be obviously the best possible solution. We all took careful and full responsibility for our pets, and did what was necessary to keep them within the boundaries of our own yard, et cetera. But, until then, we, I think the new ordinance will, as it's fully implemented and enforced, will do that job.
Thank you, Mr. Brock and Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, I agree that, once the ordinance is released and fully implemented, I think that it's going to serve its course, but we, as a council and a staff, we need to educate the residents. We need to utilize video, our TV cable channel, as well as Facebook, which is kind of what we're using right now. In addition to that, you know, the dog committee, we're going to have to update that with a couple of residents. I believe we should have three residents on the dog committee, not just one. And I also believe we should open it up to at least one resident right now, and then expand to another two. So, once we do that, I think the ordinance will fall into place, and at the same time, residents will have ownership. And those residents on the committee will actually communicate and funnel outward what the requirements are, to either own a dog and keep it constrained.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Siddiqui. What actions will you engage in to assist seniors no longer able to care for their homes to enable seniors to age in place?
Interesting question. Yeah, that's a great question. We have a lot of seniors in the community, you know, it's part of life, and I think what we can do is to bring resources to bear, you know, try to meet with those seniors, try to find out who they are, first of all, maybe engage in setting up some seminars where we can bring them in to the building, or to have some kind of seminar somewhere where we can talk about the issues of aging and living in place and things like that, and then bring resources to them, and say, these are some options that we can have for you. We can have, you know, option, you know, have some help, come to the house, some kind of caregivers that can come to the house, or, you know, and/or assist our seniors in staying in their homes, and basically figure out what resource we can bring to them and give them some options. And then, together, we can decide on the best course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
Being a senior myself, anything that helps me age in place would be most welcome, but at any rate, the, obviously, this is a need we have in the community. We have, through Oakland County and its Community Development Block grant funds, allocated money in the past, and made those programs at the county level available to our citizens. Unfortunately, some of those, some of those kinds of programs carry with it income limitations. In other words, that if a person has more resources than someone else, often, they are not eligible for those programs. The other thing is, we need to, Southfield has what they call as a senior, seniors' living commission, and they take on a lot of these types of things, they provide counseling, et cetera. And perhaps that's one thing we ought to look at, as to whether we can perhaps, by contributing to that, share their staff to provide those kinds of assistance and that kind of counseling to seniors who might need it.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, there are programs out there, and also private companies that actually buy and sell homes and have seniors that can age in place. Now, that part of the business is pretty expensive. It's not a, it's not an economical way to go. If you have the resources, you can do it. The other way is to actually try to first figure out how many seniors we have that have this need, whether they want to age in place. We need to find out what that number is, and as a council and as staff, we need to identify who they are, and then, at the same time, direct them to state monies that they could utilize to age in place. And those programs, as Mayor Brock has stated, are still in place, and they still could be utilized. But, right now, we don't even have a number as to what our seniors need, as far as those that need to age in place. So, we need to identify that number and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, I think programs like that are great, but I like to think of Lathrop Village's, Lathrop Village's charm is that we're a community of neighbors. I had an elderly widower living across the street, and for five years, I cut her lawn, I shoveled her snow, I grocery shopped for her on occasion, I did her leaves. I'm not the only one who would do that kind of thing. I think there are a lot of people in Lathrop who would do that, do that kind of thing for their neighbors. I think that's part of the reason why we all live in a community like this. So, I think we could, we could use things maybe like social media, maybe like the villagers, you know, when we know of a neighbor that, you know, needs help, we post something on villagers and see if we can get somebody to respond, or maybe, maybe do something in conjunction with the Time Bank, because we know, just because people are old, doesn't mean they don't have a lot that they can give, and so, maybe they can give in some other ways, and other people can do work for them. So, that might be something that we can integrate into the Time Bank somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Brock. Do you have suggestions for improving city lighting of neighborhoods to increase safety for pedestrians and drivers?
Increasing the lighting in neighborhoods, which we, the only place we've done lighting so far is, of course, along our main streets, Southfield Road, Eleven Mile, Twelve Mile, and so on. A number of years ago, a initiative was put on the ballot here in Lathrop Village to do street lighting throughout the city, and was voted down resoundingly, and has never been brought up again. We are in the process, with our Downtown Development Authority, of looking at our lighting along Southfield Road, which is, in spite of the fact it exists, is not really adequate. And, so, I, you know, it is going to, it would be something that's going to be, have a large price tag, and I think we need to go to our citizens and ask them more thoroughly as to how much they're willing to have us invest of the city's money to bring about that kind of lighting. And does everybody want it? That's the other thing.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, so, the DDA is currently in process of quoting new lighting for Southfield Road, but at the same time, we need to enforce the code on our businesses, because now, we have rope lighting on Southfield, which has tremendous glare when you're driving on Southfield Road. So, we need to try to maintain the reduction of the lighting there through code enforcement. And at the same time, as far as streets, I don't think we really have a solution to that, because we would have to ask our residents to take a serious hit on this. And this is a resolution that probably will garner some serious pains to go through council to try to get that resolved. So, for me to say that that's a solution, it really isn't. We would have to talk to the residents to see what they want, and then go from there. But, new lighting is coming on Southfield Road, based on the DDA's research.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, again, just to echo what they've said, that there is new lighting coming from the DDA. You know, given the amount of light pollution that we have here, especially for those of us who live around the, pretty close to the business district, I'd be surprised if residents would want streetlights throughout the streets, and it sounds like Frank said that that was voted down. I don't remember that particular proposal, but it sounds like it was voted down. But, what we could do is, we could do something like try to get an initiative, you know, Light the City initiative, or, you know, use some of our communication, you know, in the Lathrop Village magazine to encourage people to, you know, keep their porch lights on, keep their lampposts on. I mean, most of the houses have lampposts. I mean, I think, you know, that would be probably enough to make it, you know, make the sidewalks visible and not worry, have to worry about tripping over anything, without having to take a major, you know, project on, undergo a major project to put streetlights on all the streets and add to, add to the light pollution that's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor and Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, so, the lights are coming to Southfield Road, so that's great. As far as the rest of the city, you know, again, I would do, you know, take on an initiative, and we got to talk with our residents and see what they want to do. I personally don't think we need a ton of additional lights within the city. I think it's fine as is. A lot of, most of the people that I've talked to feel the same way. But, if in talking to the residents or communicating with them, and maybe, you know, setting up a workshop or something about issues that are going on in the city, if that comes up as a big one, and if people want to see it happen, then we can go down that road and see if we should make it happen. But, initially, you know, my thoughts right now are, I think the lights, you know, in the city are fine as is, and I think that's the opinion of a lot of the people that I've spoken with.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. And we'll begin the next question with Mr. Ferguson. How would you balance the needs of both the businesses and homeowners? This is, we'll begin with Mr. Ferguson on this one.
Right now, we currently have an imbalance with our businesses, because we have a, we have a high degree of specific businesses that we need to try to figure out how we're going to move forward, because at this point, we're being identified as a city that has this kind of business, and we want to have a great balance within the business community first. So, we need to not just have one or two restaurants, we also need a mom and pop store. So, we need to balance within the business community, and at the same time, once we balance within that business community, then the residents will then take ownership and start frequenting these businesses. Right now, there's an imbalance, because there's only one type of business, or two types of businesses. So, residents aren't compelled to visit these businesses. So, my action would be to try to right-size the business sector, so we have businesses that people can actually frequent, and then, at the same time, watch the residents embrace it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor.
I'm not I'm not really sure I understand the question, but I'm going to give it a go. Yeah, so along with what Ian was saying, you know, you know, I think, I spoke a little bit earlier about trying to attract specialty retail, you know, I brought the example of Georgia Soccer Supply and the lamp stores, but I think we need to, you know, attract things like, you know, bakeries, restaurants, the type of thing that our residents can walk to. You know, I would love to walk to restaurants. The only one we have really is, that's walkable for me, is Amity. But the other nice thing about, I think, these specialty retail types of stores is that they don't require a huge footprint, so that way we don't have parking issues. You know, you have a store like Georgia Soccer Supply, four or five parking spaces are plenty, so it doesn't put any imposition on the neighborhood. And so that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to attract these kinds of stores, as opposed to, you know, a Kroger, which there's no place we could put a Kroger or a supermarket or, you know, Whole Foods or anything like that in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor and Mr. Siddiqui.
Yes, you know, we moved to Lathrop Village because it was a great place to live. You know, the houses were great, they had a lot of charm, it's in a great location. So to me, the balance is, you know, it's the residents first. I mean, this is, we live in the city, because we love the city and we love living here, and this is, that's why we're here. So yes, we want businesses to be in Lathrop Village, we want the right businesses, we want to attract the right kind of development, but we have to be careful not to overdevelop and not to have things that are, you know, businesses that are not going to fit in with the city. So yeah, I mean, I would definitely want to work with the Downtown Development Authority and with other businesses that want to come in, and we should definitely consider attracting those types of businesses, but we always got to keep in mind that our residents come first and the city comes first, and that means the city has to fall in line with what the residents want.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui, and finally, Mr. Brock.
It's my turn. The 80% of our property in the city is residential. I know approximately 20% is business. The business frontage is developed in such a way that was relatively narrow frontage, and therefore is somewhat difficult to reinvent, and one of the things we're going to have to try and balance out in some ways. So, but obviously, with that kind of a breakdown, the more significant responsibility the city has is to maintain our residential community as a high quality with good services, that we need to keep the homes attractive and people wanting to continue to buy them and move here. Our strategic plan for business redevelopment has always been aimed, is aimed real, exactly, at attracting the kinds of businesses that's been described, that you can walk to, that you can get to, and that meet the needs of our local citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Cantor. Please explain your ideas on how the city can improve services to the residents without raising taxes.
Well, you know, I mean, the first, one thing I would say about that to start out with is, again, I've done a lot of canvassing over the last two weeks and have stopped on a lot of your homes, and one of the first things that people tell me is that they enjoy the Lathrop services. They specifically mention things like the leaves, the leaf pickup, they're ecstatic that they don't have to bag them, which is great, because we're a tree city, being able to pick up sticks, the trash, you know, they rave about the services. So of course, they can always be improved. The only thing I can really think of off the top of my head is just to be as efficient as possible, make sure that we're getting the best deals, the best contracts on those services. And yeah, I really don't have much in the way of, on that, other than just to be as efficient as possible to continue the great services that we have and try to bring on new ones as we get additional revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor, Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, yes, I agree with Bruce. I think our services are really good and we need to maintain those. You know, bringing, keeping those kind of services, I think you got to watch the budget, you got to make sure we're getting the best deal we can get, you know, have multiple bids and make sure we're, we are considering new options versus, you know, existing recurring options, you know, make sure we're checking out, checking those things out, but then also go after additional revenue. So we don't, you know, I don't want to increase taxes either. I don't want to pay any more taxes, I think we pay enough, but, you know, is there a way to get additional revenue for the city? You know, can we go after grants, you know, federal grants, state and local grants, to help with the parks or to help with other activities that we want to engage in within the city? I think we can. So I think we have to kind of look at those options and see what else is out there for us to bring more revenue into the city without raising taxes, and we can use that revenue to do what we need to do, to keep our facilities strong and our services strong.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
Don't want to pay any more taxes, do we? But the other side of that is, the services have to be paid for, and we have been, done a splendid job in this city of maintaining a high level of services to our residents, and we have been able to do that even through a severe economic downturn, and we were able to cut corners enough in various other places that we were able to maintain all of our services. So we're proud of that. The other thing that, for those of you out there who wonder how do cities survive these days, that's the really question, is that the state legislature has not lived up to its responsibilities to, in the area of revenue sharing. They have not, they have curtailed revenue sharing for years, year after year after year. So one thing you can do to help is to put some pressure on those folks we elect to represent us up in Lansing, to make sure that the state budgets reflect the, what was promised to cities when we gave up certain tax authorities in order to give it to the state, that responsibility to the state, they were promised they would make us whole.
Thank you, Mr. Brock, and Mr. Ferguson.
We've done a great deal to adjust our budget to accommodate great services, so garbage pickup, leaf pickup, keeping the streets clean. All of that ultimately boils down to a good staff, a good lean staff, and that's the key. You know, this is about human-to-human contact. If we don't have the right person in the right position, and if that position's empty, we've got a problem. We need to staff up, that's the first thing. Second thing is state revenue sharing, as Mayor Brock stated. They originally started with $514,008.85 for our city. Now we're barely getting $320,000, and that, they started way back in 2001. Now we're hardly getting anything. So we've been really creative in balancing our budget and cutting where we could cut, and we didn't take out anything when it came to residents' needs. Our needs consist of human-to-human contact, we need to staff up as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We have three more questions, but I'm going to combine, I'll give you one large question, and then we'll have two more questions after that. But the large question is actually three separate questions, and I'm going to ask for an hour, a minute and a half time for the candidates. It breaks down into this. They're asking about the qualities and skills that you have, your technology knowledge, and your experience. Now, I'm going to read the questions. The qualities and skills question is this: What unique qualities and skills or perspective would you bring to council? Then there's the technology question. What technology are you comfortable with? Do you have a smartphone? Do you use social media? How often do you visit the city website? And then there's the experience question. What experience, if any, have you had in city government, here or elsewhere, such as Planning Commission, DDA, Downtown Development Authority, et cetera? So an hour, a minute and a half, and we'll begin with Mr. Siddiqui.
Okay, qualities and skills. So I guess my, you know, I'm a CPA by background, so I'm an accountant, I do tax work, I've been with my latest company for the last 12 years, almost 13 years now, so I have a lot of experience leading teams, leading big projects, dealing with numbers, making successful engagements, successful projects, and those kind of things. But I think the biggest, you know, skill and qualities that I have is, I get along with people, I work well with people, people seem to like me, I can work on a team, I can work individually, we can get things done. That's what I want to bring to the city government. You know, I think I can do that. I think, you know, I've been a resident for a long time, I stated in my opening, 21 years, love the city, love the people in the city, our neighbors are great, we've had a lot of, you know, parties on our, on our street, on our house, and, you know, block parties, things like that. I can bring that kind of resident experience to the job. And, you know, the other part of the question, I'll talk about experience first. So I haven't been in the government at all. I, you know, I'm not, I'm a resident. I've been to some city council meetings, quite a few over the last year, and just haven't had the time to spend with any of the committees or the DDA or anything like that, but I'm interested to help and I want to help, and I think I can bring a fresh view and new perspectives to the job. And as far as technology, I'm tech savvy, I mean, not I'm the super tech savvy, but I have a smartphone and, you know, I can get along with technology, I'm not afraid of it, and I use it all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Brock.
Well, in terms of my skills, et cetera, my background is in hospital administration. I spent, I came to work at Providence Hospital about 45 years ago as their head of their human resources, so I reorganized that for them, and we, so I spent the rest of my career within corporate administration and in government relations. In terms of technology, yeah, I've learned to do something with a smartphone, and I have a whole staff of children who teach me every so often how to correct my misconceptions about certain parts of it. So I've learned how to survive in the social media environment and with the smartphone, so that's not an issue. In terms of local government, I have spent 25 years in this community in local government. I worked with local government in my job in government relations with Providence Hospital, with local governments all over southeast Michigan, gaining an awful lot of insight and experience in how they operated, and have been able to, had developed a lot of contacts and a lot of networking that has served me well over the years for helping to assist this city as we've dealt with our big neighbor, Southfield, and because we've purchased some very vital services from them. So I think from a standpoint of local government experience, there's, I think I stack up pretty well.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, so I'm a 20-year, 20-plus years engineer in automotive industry. I'm going on 20 years with my company. The skills I bring to the table, basically, my military skills were, I was probably one of the youngest people to run a propulsion plant on the ship, and I had three or four, three times the age that I had to dictate orders to. So my military background allowed me to disseminate and distribute orders effectively. The skills I bring to the table, I'm a really great negotiator when it comes to contracts and when it comes to being fiscally responsible and looking at budgets as we move forward when it comes to specific projects. I'm a project engineer, technical sales engineer right now, and basically, I have to manage a budget of well over $3 million for my company. Technology, I use smartphone, Facebook, I don't Instagram or tweet, but I'm always on the city's website. I mean, I pride myself on going up there to see how it works. City expertise, this is, I'm an incumbent, and I'm running for a second term, because I feel that my psychological skills can dictate how we hire staff, which is the key. We have to hire the right staff, as well as move forward in right-sizing the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, and Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, well, in terms of quality and skills, I spent a career of managing teams of people. I really have, I think, strong skills in terms of listening to all sides of an argument and researching all sides of an argument or an issue, and then building a consensus among groups of people. So I think something, skills like that would be very valuable on city council. I also have a high degree of fiscal responsibility. I'm a young retiree, you don't get to be a young retiree unless you know how to manage money or you come from a wealthy family, and I did not come from a wealthy family. And as part of my career, I managed large budgets and dealt with sales that went into the hundreds of millions of dollars. From a technical perspective, I am a geek. She will vouch for me, I am a huge geek. I write my own programs. I just recently didn't like a backup program that I had, so I wrote my own. I'm very up on all of the technology, but I don't tweet, and I don't Instagram, even though I'm a photographer. And then as far as experience with city government, I have consulted for state government, so I have a little bit of experience there, and I also served for three years on the DDA Design Committee, and I'm definitely well-versed in dealing with government from the hundreds of letters that I've written to various people in different areas of the government.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cantor, and we'll begin the last question with Mr. Brock. What are your top three goals/concerns for the city's future?
I think the very top goal I have, and we, and I think is shared by all of our council actually, is that this past year has been a tumultuous year for this city, and the fact that we have to find the right leadership for this city, in terms of a city, new city administrator, and is our top, has got to be our top priority moving forward, because everything else is going to depend on how well we get that done, in terms of making the city work to its maximum efficiency. So that is number one above all others, in my opinion. I've been a member of this council for a long time, and I have, I know how well it can work and has worked in the past, and certainly can work again in the future if we do the right things now.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Mr. Ferguson.
Top three goals and concerns. So first one is, we need a qualified city manager that has experience with a budget, has experience with interacting with residents and staff, so we can alleviate the toxicity. Right now, we have a toxic environment, we want to change that. We also want to staff up and have the city manager set tone for this city. That's the first concern. How do we do that? We hire someone that is qualified, that cares about the city long enough to stay and realize full potential in the city. Second one is, have a cohesion between the DDA council staff. Right now, we've got a lot of gears moving, but none are meshing in a cohesive manner. One hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. So as a city, moving forward, all of these groups need to get together and have a common goal moving forward. The last thing is, basically, redevelop Annie Lathrop School. It cannot sit there for very long. We either have to tear it down or we have to repurpose it, and it is going to be up to you all, not up to us. Whatever you want, we will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, like Frank said, it's been a tumultuous time recently, and I think we need to address that, both from the staff and the front office, as well as from the neighborhood and for the residents. I think the residents are the most important part of Lathrop Village, and we've been doing great things, you know, like our Food Truck Fridays, Kimmy Horn, the concert series, I think we need to continue that and build on that and take that momentum. I need, I think Southfield Road needs to be revitalized. As Ian said, we need to do something with Annie Lathrop School. We've got to do something with Southfield Road. I walk that from 11 Mile to 12 Mile almost every day with my dogs, and I get so frustrated looking at Southfield Road. We need to revitalize that. And then another primary goal, as per the residents, is the roads, fixing the existing roads, and then also paving some of the gravel roads. So those would be three big priorities for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor and Mr. Siddiqui.
Yes, my top three goals, I think, would be, one was, is to make sure the city is running smoothly. So that involves make sure we have the right staff in place, make sure that the tone has been set from the top and it's a great place to work, and that the city is communicating with the residents, the residents' views are being heard and being taken into account, and... And, you know, if all that happens, the city will run smoothly. So I think that's my top goal. Secondly, just want to keep the city beautiful. I mean, it's a great place to live, we love living here, the houses are great, the properties are great. You know, we want to make sure that the sidewalks are nice, people have a great, you know, a safe and a nice place to walk in the city, want to make sure the streets are nice. I know it's a simple thing, but I mean, I think that's, it's an important thing. You know, there's a lot of roads that are, right now, that are asphalt and not that nice. We need to make sure that they're fixed up and paved and make it nice. And lastly, I want to improve the value for the residents in the city. You know, get grants, get more revenue in the city so we can do more work, you know, improve the buildings on Southfield Road, because all that, and work with the owners to do that, because all of that is gonna bring value to the city and help the residents that way.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. That is the end of the questions. We'll have closing statements of one minute in reverse order to the order of the opening statements, and so we'll begin the closing statements with Mr. Siddiqui.
Well, thanks, thanks everyone for listening. I know it's been, it's been a little bit of a long evening, almost two hours, but I appreciate your attention. You know, I'm, you know, like I've said before a couple times, I'm a resident of the city, I want the city to do well. I think it's done very well, but I think I can bring a fresh set of eyes, a new perspective, the ability to listen and work well with people, to listen to the residents, you know, in my, on my block, on my street, in our side, and all throughout Lethers Village, and figure out, okay, what do the people, what do our residents want? And let's work with the administration and the city council and let's, let's put those things in place. You know, so I appreciate your attention and, you know, I'm, you know, I'm happy to run and I want to represent you guys on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah, again, I appreciate you all listening to us for the last hour and a half. I hope I provided some insight tonight into who I am and what I stand for. But to summarize, if I get elected, I will have four main priorities, not in any particular order, but first is code enforcement. I think we need to move from a part-time codes enforcer to a full-time codes enforcer, and that message has been loud and clear from the residents as I walk around. Revitalizing Southfield Road, I've talked a little bit about that and I've got a lot of ideas, many that I couldn't get out in one-minute blocks, but we need to do that. We need to fix the residential roads. You know, they're the worst roads in the area, clearly. And so we need to, we need to take care of that. And then I also want to make sure that we ensure all of our expenditures are fully vetted and appropriate and they balance the needs of both the residents and the businesses and remain in budget. So I hope you agree with some of those priorities. I hope you'll go out and vote and I hope you'll consider voting for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I want to leave the city better than the way I found it, which was two years ago. I want to fully man the staff up, I want to make sure we have a qualified city manager in place that will set tone for the staff and ultimately boost morale. Morale is extremely low and ultimately, that affects heavily on the residents. That's why services aren't being communicated correctly. Case in point, road work that has not been communicated. That's indicative of a staff that is overcapacity. I want to alleviate that problem. The second thing, redevelop Annie Lethers School. We have an obligation to either redevelop it or, say, tear it down and put something new in it. I believe in second chances, and I know you guys do too. It is a historical building, we need to revitalize that. Maintain our city services. Make sure that the services that are being provided are quoted correctly and they provide the service needed for these residents. And lastly, I just want to make sure that we have the energy to do it. I have the energy and I'm sure a lot of other people do too. So please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And finally, Mr. Brock?
Again, I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening, and I thank the League of Women Voters for their sponsorship of this forum. Unfortunately, there were a lot of really good questions that came up this evening, and there was not really, a minute or a minute and a half is really hard to give adequate answers to some of those issues that were brought up. But that's one of the reasons that I feel that I can be of service, continued service to this community, is that I have the experience, the background, and I have the energy, believe it or not, to continue to work on behalf of the city and moving us forward in the coming years. The code enforcement, the revitalization, a lot of things have been talked about, obviously are high on my priority list. Staffing up the city appropriately is obviously on all of our priority lists. So again, I'm just urging you to remember to vote on November 7th and ask that you would re-elect me as a member of the council to serve your needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. The League of Women Voters thanks the audience, the candidates, and CMNTV for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, check the league website for our voter guide, LWVOA.org. Also, CMNTV advises me that this forum will be rebroadcast five times a day following the city council meetings, which are broadcast five times a day, starting in a couple of days, from, a couple of days from now until the day of the election.
Something to look forward to.
The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. And remember to vote on November 7th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you and good evening.
[applause][1787.65]